Good morning, everyone. This conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. Do we have anyone here to speak this morning?
No one has signed up to speak this morning.
Okay, all right, we will move along. Eddie, would you please?
Yes, ma'am.
Get us started?
All right. Item one, approve minutes of the regular meeting of May 23rd, 2022. Number two, approve a list of claims. Number three, approve psychological services agreement with James Stefurek for a psychological evaluation of juveniles with cases pending before the 13th Judicial Court, Juvenile Division. Number four, approve recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to add the following proposed fees for services for physicals as required by Section 1 Act 80-332. Number five, we're going to ask that you vote at the conference. Approve surplus dispersment agreement with Tiffany in Bosco, PA relating to dispersment to county of excess funds of $9,397.85 resulting from foreclosure of first mortgage on property on which the county held a second home mortgage.
Second.
Number six, approve list of credits for insolvents, errands, litigations, and tax liens for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Number seven, approve payment of claims for the Home Program in conjunction with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Program. Number eight, approve amending the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to move the remaining budget of $191,856.52 from the Ralph Latham Road Project to the Miracle Road Project, now known as Michael Speaks Way. Number nine, approve amending 2021 Capital Improvement Plan to transfer $144,000 from District 2 unallocated funds to project Mobile County Soccer Complex. Number 10, approve appropriation contract with Marching Cougars Band Booster Club in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds for operational expenses. Number 11, approve sponsorship agreement with 100 Black Men of Greater Mobile in the amount of $2,500 from District 1 funds for its annual gala and fundraiser. 12, adopt resolution authorizing joint purchasing agreements with City of Saraland, City of Citronelle, and we're going to amend this item to include the City of Chickasaw for purchases from county's annual bids. Number 13, we're also going to amend as follows. Approve joint purchasing agreement with City of Saraland, City of Citronelle, City of Chickasaw for the purchase of certain materials and supplies during fiscal year 2023. Number 14, adopt soil source resolution authorizing contract with NEC Corporation of America for replacement of the automated fingerprint system currently in use by the Sheriff's Office with the only system compatible with the State of Alabama Automated Fingerprint Identification System for a purchase price of $375,000 to be paid as invoiced by NEC from the Sheriff's State Requisition Funds, together with maintenance services to be provided by NEC, the sole provider of such services, for its proprietary systems in the amount of $861,816, specifically approving payment as follows, and approve managed hosting services agreement with NEC Corporation of America. Number 15, we're also going to ask-
So, Eddie, let me just ask you something. So, do these years total the 375 plus the 861? Okay. So, the, these eight years total the 861, is what we think? Okay, thank you.
Number 15, we'll ask for a vote at this conference. Authorize adopting and submitting the 2022 Year 3 Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents.
So moved, second.
16, approve terminating contract with John W. Davis effective May 5th, 2022 for the Sheriff's Office. Contract approved September 9th, 2019, Agenda Item Number 21. 17, approve agreement with Courtney Noll McCully for psychological testing services in the amount of $170 for each employment candidate tested for the period May 6th, 2022 through April 30th, 2025 for the Sheriff's Office. 18, approve amendment, approve amending Mobile County Commission Conference and Meeting Schedule as follows. Schedule Conference on Thursday, August 18th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. 19, authorize subrecipient agreement with Alabama Department of Public Health in an amount up to $499,943 to be utilized for detection and mitigation of COVID-19 at MetroGel for a period ending July 30th, 2024. 20, approve appropriation contract with Moa Band of Choctaw Indians in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds for its annual powwow event. 21, approve sponsorship agreement with Africatown Community Development Corporation in the amount of $2,500 from District 1 funds for its Africatown Bridge Challenge. 22, approve application for Lounge Retail Liquor Class 2 alcohol license submitted by Raj Petro for Raj Petro Package Store, 3565 Lauryn Dean Road. 23, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Grant Agreement. This agreement has been available to the public since May 25th, 2022. This expedited public comment period is in compliance with the waiver contained in the federal registered notice, which reduces the minimum duration of required public comment periods from 30 days to five days. 24, adopt substantial agreement to the program year 2020, a DECA CDBG-CV grant agreement following the comment period and public hearing. 25, authorize assignment of Goodwin Mills in Kwood to project for installation of emergency generator at Africatown Heritage House for the proposed fee of $10,000. Work will consist of the design bidding and project administration associated with the installation of an emergency generator. 26, approve hosting the Mobile County Municipal Association Dinner Meeting to be held on June 16th, 2022, and payment of expenses not to exceed $5,000. 27, approve Second Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with the Coleman Group doing business at Spheryon to make provision for polling technicians and other workers during the 2022 runoff and general elections. 28, we'll ask that you vote at this conference. Approve change order number three with AVAP USA to reduce consulting teams' hours of extended support. The new agreement estimate will be increased by, we're changing the language there, will be increased by $24,480.
So moved, second.
Number 29, adopt Mobile County Commission Safety Guidebook dated June 3rd, 2022. 30, approve Mobile County Commission's Letter of Support of AT&amp;T's Grant Application to Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund for three broadband projects in the county, one in each district. 31, approve refund for tobacco tax stamps damaged and destroyed as follows. 32, award bid to J&amp;P Construction Company for Mount Vernon Water Treatment Plant upgrades for their total bid in the amount of $2,347,100, and authorize execution of contract documents. 33, consider taking the following action on bids. 34, approve Fleet Zoom-
So, what was the, I noticed no response for the video surveillance equipment. What were we going to be surveilling? Okay, okay, thank you. And nobody, no takers, apparently.
34, approve Fleet Zoom yearly communication renewal from Hydra Service in the amount of $600 at the Chanchula landfill and the Acortis site for the Environmental Services Department.
What's Fleet Zoom communication?
For monitoring of water flow at the landfills?
Okay, thank you.
35, approve renewal of support agreement with KaraSoft under the current GSA schedule in the amount of $23,975 for DocuSign for the period June 2nd, 2022 through June 1st, 2023 for the County Commission. 36, approve renewal service agreement-
Question, I'm sorry, question on the DocuSign is, what is the anticipated result of that? Is that so all documents or just some, or how is that going to work? Be electronic? I'm not, I'm unclear as to exactly what it will do.
Darren, are you able to speak on that?
I know, I've been getting some of both, you know.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Actually, I did not negotiate this, but if I'm not mistaken, and I can find out for sure that this is basically the annual agreement for the-
For current services?
Moving forward, correct, for enterprise agreement that we have with DocuSign. So, I believe that gives us- She's not, Dana and Vanessa can speak more on that, but I'll get that information for you.
Okay, I'm just curious to know exactly if this is going to expand or if the, if the plan is to eventually move all the documents to DocuSign?
No, this is primarily, this is primarily for the signatures for those initiators that want to send out documents to have them digitally signed. This allows for so many of those particular initiators to send those documents out for signatures.
Right, because I would get, I would get some DocuSign documents, and then, and then I'd get, you know, the hard copies with ink, you know, to sign, I guess, right? Signature.
Just so you know, the DocuSign will be integrated with the new Workday system. And so, a lot of the, the physical papers should actually go away.
Okay, I was just wondering how that would be divided up? I mean, what to expect as far as DocuSign and is that actual documents to sign? You can find out for me?
I will find out for you, thanks.
Okay.
Dana is out sick today, but it looks like she was the one who initiated this, and we'll have her follow up with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think Workday is a wonderful thing. It's really going to help with efficiency and everything, but I want to make sure I don't miss any documents. You know, sometimes it's hard to keep up with if they're all coming at you left and right on, you know, on the internets. Somebody has to come in and remind me, did you sign? So, anyway, thank you, Darren.
36, approve renewal service agreement with heavy-duty lift and equipment in the amount of $2,200, inspection of lift equipment for the county shop. 37, approve renewal software subscription with Unity Fiber under the current State of Alabama contract in the amount of $42,274.80 for Cisco Amp Umbrella and Duo for the County Commission. Number 38, we are going to ask the Commissioners to vote on this today. Approve a maintenance agreement with Unity Fiber for room kit minis in the amount of $9,215.73 for the County Commission.
So moved, second.
39, approve renewal of support agreement with Pinnacle Networks in the amount of $1,770.06 for various NetCloud mobile essentials for the Sheriff's Office. 40, approve renewal software maintenance with Blue Alley in the amount of $6,024.95 for production support coverage, VMware server for vSphere for the period June 15th, 2022 through June 14th, 2023 for the Sheriff's Office in MetroGel. 41, award bid for MetroGel inmate healthcare services to NAF Care as the lowest responsible bidder for the period August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025, with the option for an additional two one-year extensions.
Question on that, has, has the Sheriff's Office been pleased with the service they've gotten? Have we heard any complaints? Does anybody, is anybody aware? They are performing adequately? Okay, thank you.
42, approve sponsorship agreement with Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama in the total amount of $3,000 for its Youth of the Year luncheon to be divided as follows. Number 43, we're going to revise the language as follows. Approve grant application by the county to the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $500,000 to be used in partnership with the Sheriff of Mobile County and/or the District Attorney for Mobile County to address closed violent crime cold cases with no local match. We do have four add-ons this morning. Number one.
I'm sorry.
Add-on number one, approve request of the Alabama 4H Club to use the John Archer Arena on June 23rd, 2022 for the 4H Show Calves weigh-in and waive all associated arena fees. There will be no cost or preparation for the county. Number two, approve appointment of Kenny Stewart to represent District 2 as a member of the Board of Review for Mobile County Junk Control Ordinance to serve until his successor shall be named. Number three, adopt resolution electing to come under the provisions of Act 2022-229, regular session of the Alabama Legislature, and providing funds to the employees' retirement system for the cost of the one-time lump sum payment to eligible employees retired from the Mobile County Commission and beneficiaries of deceased retirees. Number four, award bid 25-22 Electronic Surveillance System for Africatown Heritage House to SNO Enterprise Incorporated. And that is all.
We will move over to engineering. Mr. Kegel?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We ask that you would consider taking the following action. Item number one, approve assigning contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. That also has some rebuilt Alabama funds in it, Sweet Town Road, Sweet Town Road North to Southern Earth Sciences. Item number two, approve a education fund project to stripe carpool lanes at St. Elmo Elementary School, estimated cost $600. Item three, award bid Frank Turner Construction for the Tanner Williams Road Additional Lanes Project for his bid of a little over $14.4 million. Item four, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds as listed. Item five, approve right-of-way agreement for Track 1 on our Weaver Road East project, one of our 2018 pay-as-you-go projects. Item six, approve right-of-way agreement for Track 2 on our Warren Street Turner Road, North Watson Road, 2018 pay-as-you-go project. Item seven, approve right-of-way agreement for Track 10, Track 22, and Track 25 on the Holly Point Drive Sheffield Road, Wilson Road, 2020 pay-as-you-go project. Item eight, approve reimbursement agreement for relocation of utility facilities with Alabama Power on our Maddox Road project, one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item nine, approve agreement with Norfolk Southern Railroad Railway Company for applications for a grant through the Federal Railroad Administration. Item 10, approve a education fund project to furnish and deliver 11 loads of washed sand to Theodore High School. Item 11, approve a preliminary plat only of Dunham Farms, which is in Commission District 3. Item 12, approve a preliminary and final plat of Wise Subdivision, which is in Commission District 3, and a preliminary and final plat of Three Notch Travis Subdivision, which is also in Commission District 3. Item 13, award bid for Project MCR 2018-006, which is the Jeff Hamilton Road-Johnson Road Intersection Improvement Project, and the Johnson Road West Great Drain Basin Pay Project, which are both 2018 pay-as-goes to HCL Contracting for their bid of a little over $6.7 million. And Commissioners, we have an add-on this morning. Approve a project to furnish and deliver four loads of sand clay material to Moa Band of Choctaw Indians for an estimated cost of $700. And that is currently-
I'm just noticing, two weeks ago it was $600.
We're lucky, it's only $100.
Can we go ahead? Do you mind if we go ahead and vote on?
Sure, go ahead and make the most-
So moved.
Second. I do have a question, on the Tanner Williams Road project. And I realize that that was the low bid. How much more is that than what was originally estimated? Do I even want to know?
We originally had about $10 million estimated for the construction cost. We updated that construction cost right before we went to bid, and it came in a little over $12 million, about $12.5 million. Bids came in at 14.4.
And that was the low bid?
That was the low bid, yes, ma'am.
And we're seeing this across the board on everything, right?
And we only received two bids. There were other contractors that had shown interest, but they got back with us and said, well, they're just so busy on other projects, they just couldn't even bid it. I mean, they just can't get to it.
So, in spite of the fact that prices have gone up astronomically, they're all still really busy?
Really, really busy.
It's only a $12 million contract, I don't have time.
Well, Commissioners, for example, item number 13 on the Johnson Road West project, Jeff Hamilton Road Intersection Improvement project, that came in a little over $2 million higher than what we had it estimated. We're scrounging right now to try and prioritize our projects on what we're able to put funds towards to cover these. I do not want to go to a bid and ask contractors to work up their bids, submit them to us, and us not be able to award that contract. It's just not fair.
It's a lot of work.
So, we're going to prioritize our projects to see what we can even move forward to bid with.
So, some of them may have to drop off the list, then, in order to-
We're going to prioritize them, and we'll coordinate with your offices, so you guys will be in agreement with us on what we consider to be our priorities, and try to move forward with bidding those projects, and then possibly have to relist some of these projects in future pay-as-you-go programs just to obtain funding for them.
So, the estimates on costs for, that we request for pay-as-you-go projects, that'll be with this elevated contingency, correct?
About three months ago, we went in and estimated what we needed to increase for the 2022 pay-as-you-go program, and we did something that was almost unprecedented, which is increase the cost estimates 15% per year for two years. We thought that was almost excessive, but with the trend that we saw last year, we thought we needed to do something similar to that. I don't think that's even going to be close. We, we've seen a 15% increase just since January on our projects.
And this is primarily cost of materials, or it's not?
Cost of materials, cost of labor.
Labor too?
Cost of equipment, everything.
Is it, yeah, that's probably the root of it there. Any anticipation on the future? I mean, if we, could we wait it out, or who knows?
We're, we're taking it day by day, almost, Commissioner, but we'll, we'll coordinate with your offices, and we'll start setting some priorities on which projects we feel like we really need to move forward, and what we can get the most bang for our buck, and which ones we feel like we can wait a little while on.
This, this is a major concern. You know, it's hard for the public to understand, especially when they've been waiting for roadwork, and, you know, they know it's on the list, that it doesn't get done, and they, they don't really understand, I think, that what we're dealing with, with increased prices.
Yeah, we're running into situations where some of our utilities are having a hard time getting equipment, getting materials to do their relocations on our projects. Our contractors are asking for delayed bids, because whenever we award the project to them, they have to order equipment for their projects and materials for their projects, steel products, things of that nature, and they're being told six to eight months before they can even get materials, so. It's, it's just an ongoing saga that we're having to deal with right now, and it's not just us. I've, I've talked with the ALDOT employees, they're running into the same situation. City of Mobile running into the same situation. So, it's something we're going to have to fight our way through.
Okay, understood.
We'll keep you all informed.
Thank you. And there, there's another issue I wanted to mention, and I know Tyler is very, very familiar with this, because he's heard from my office as well as probably just about everybody else that works in the building. And, and I see people back there swatting. We've got this gnat infestation, apparently. Tyler, I know there are, where are you? You didn't leave, did you? There you are.
And Tyler, this time I didn't call you up here, it wasn't me.
She was even swatting there a minute ago. But, anyway, I, I know there, there are steps and plans of what can be done. I think, you know, we've dealt with this for so long. If, if we have to move on to even more extreme measures, whatever we need to do, but, and, and I would say, whatever we do, let's begin here on the ground floor, because that seems to be where it's happening the worst.
Yes, ma'am. We, we have tried just about everything we can think of, even creating a customized sprayer that sprays the dumpster in the basement periodically, and we still have what we have. So, what we're working on right now is hiring a consultant to come in and look at the issue and see if they can make some recommendation, because while it is kind of a seasonal thing, it does happen every year. So, whatever we can learn and implement this year, we'll be able to apply through the future. Right now, we've talked to one of our consultants. They have a relationship with someone at Auburn University, so they are talking about doing a team-up effort to contract with us and come in and look at our problem, make some recommendations.
They could take us on as a project.
Yes, ma'am.
Pay study.
Well, I purchased some Zivo plug-in lights, and I caught two gnats night before last and one last night.
We've got one in the basement that just loads up, but that, that only kills the live ones, and then the new ones continue to hatch. So, it's something we need someone to look at.
Yeah, I think, well, keep us posted, please. I know I get complaints all the time, and you do too, so we're doing what we can, but, you know, we're always looking for a way to make this problem go away.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, one- Okay, one, one last thing from me. Did you have anything, Commissioner? A sad announcement, a former Mobile County Commissioner, James Mason, Jr., who served from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-three, passed away. His services, the visitation and service will be on Friday from eleven to noon on June tenth at Pinecrest Funeral Home on Dauphin Island Parkway. I know that those of you who have worked here for many years, probably, Edith is nodding her head, remember him, and I, I never had the pleasure of meeting him, but, but I'm very sorry for his passing, and we'll certainly keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. All right. If we, nothing else, Sharie? Okay, well, then we will adjourn this meeting, and I will see everyone again on Monday. We stand adjourned.
Yeah, he hurt, he hurt me.